All right, and we're recording, so may we come to order, please? This is the regular March meeting of the Garrett Park Town Council. The first order of business is approval of the agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as circulated.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda circulated.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of adopting the agenda.
Aye.
Aye.
So our first order of business under the agenda is the so-called consent agenda, which consists of approval of the February 10, 2025 Town Council Meeting Minutes. That was the regular February meeting. And approval of the February 24, 2025 Special Town Council Meeting Minutes. Do I hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as written on the agenda.
Thank you. And second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next order of business is presentations from residents. Do we have any residents who would care to speak to the council? Okay.
My work on adjustment.
Yeah. Do you want to?
Kayla's going up. Okay.
Can you just take it off and hold it?
Hold it like a box, huh? So, welcome, and we would like if you could tell us your name and where you live, please.
My name is Evelyn Hemmelford, and I live on Wokabe Avenue. And I have two items to say. My first item is, I think there should be a dog park where the, in the space that the woman donated her property to the town. Because we have lots of dogs.
Where's my seat? Right here? Sorry.
Sorry.
Because we have lots of dogs in the neighborhood. And I think, and I think we should have a dog park there. And my second item is, on Wokabe Avenue, the curbs are not like, really bad because they don't hold the rain up. And we need better streets and better curbs.
Thank you.
Good.
On Wokabe, with the curbs?
Thank you very much for taking the time to provide your input.
Thank you. We appreciate your coming out this evening. Are there any other residents who would wish to make a presentation to the council? Okay, we'll try to make time after we've heard from the contract designer. Are they all squared up? Okay, good. So, hearing no further requests for a presentation from residents, we will move to the next order of business, which is presentation and approval of the recommended Yandell Park Design for mandatory referral submission. And we will turn it over to Michael Norton of Norton Land Design.
Hey, good evening, everyone. This is Michael Norton with Norton Land Design. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Beautiful. I am remote this evening, as you guys can tell. I will go over this evening, the preferred plan that we have developed for Yandell Park, based on community input, meeting with the community, and also the survey that was distributed to the community as well. And we had three concept plans and have worked through the, again, through the survey and through the community input and have taken what we are calling the preferred concept. And I am happy to share my screen here. And let me pull that up for everyone. I believe some of the members of the, of the board were at the last community meeting. So for those of you that were not there, this was concept, what was concept one of the three concepts presented to the community for input. This concept is the circular defined spaces that, and I will kind of zoom in for everyone. This plan is the, the plan that takes the path and makes a horseshoe from the two curb cuts that we have, not really curb cuts, but we'll say drive, previous driveway entrances on the property. The one on the east, and then we'll call it on the west side of Kennelworth Avenue. Comes up to a hot point where we have a small gathering space at the top. This plan does have a different hatch pattern than what is on the pavement right now. That was the concept. However, we have decided this will be one uniform material, the gathering space and the pathway. And then we have an area that we'll call like a community green, which is a much smaller meditative space, quieter, passive, to be respectful to the adjacent property owners that are very close to this property. And then in the larger space, we have a woodchip. It's a timber, it's a little nature play area. So you'd see it'd be like the logs that, well, we're showing in the images on the plan. And there'd be boulders around the perimeter to kind of be respectful to the natural setting of this property and merge what we'll call a built environment with a more natural setting. Like I was saying before, the rest of the property will remain in a natural setting. The bamboo removal that is taking, currently taking place will continue. That will go on for a little while longer. As part of the concept, I can go through a couple of more things that we have refined. So in your, I believe in your packet or what was submitted for this evening's agenda also includes a grading plan that we're showing how the pathways are working out and the elevations that will come up. The eight, this, so this west side is the ADA access. So it's access for all from the left or west side will come up to the gathering space. And then you can either enter the green space or the woodchip space, all on the same grade. So this is all 100% accessible. And then we have a few little stepping stones that go between these two areas, if you like, and kind of a little nature stepping stone path to the, the steeper path on the right side on the east. There is a small wall that will be built on the backside of the smaller space. And that is to be as lightly as possible on the, I believe that's oak tree in the back left corner. So we're going to pull these grades in a little bit more and stay off of that tree. We're not proposing any tree removals as part of this project. We've tried to keep the limits of disturbance as tight as possible for this plan. This is all preliminary right now. The next step after discussion this evening would be to go to start planning for the mandatory referral process, which is that parking planning. The next plan that we have is a preliminary landscape planting plan that we show how all of the planting area will be integrated in with the grading and with the design. Evergreen trees, a lot of holly trees along the west side, and even a few back when some little pockets in, along this property to the northwest as well, just a couple of little pieces. We did put a few ornamental native understory trees, kind of just spread sporadically throughout the site, just to give a little bit of pop of color during the springtime. But very minimal, very light impact on the, on the overall property. We are focusing obviously very heavily on the area of development in the, as part of the conservation easement documents. The planting, again, we have a nice row of ornamental understory trees along the walkway. These are the only trees that are non-native to this area. They are the nice yushino cherries that have that beautiful blooming in the springtime that everyone loves. Just on the inside of the pathway is the only location. Otherwise, we're using red bud, white fringe tree, service berry as understory trees around the perimeter, kind of see in this area, around the, around the activity spaces. And then larger shrubs, the smaller shrubs throughout. What we also have on the plan is a suggestive plant material list that we have, that we've been working on right now. Again, red bud, white fringe trees, some little sweet bay magnolias, all the nice natives that we have, again, except for the, the flowering cherries along the, the one in the pathway, the walkway, if you will. Then we have the shrubs, we have the chokeberries, beauty berry, just some small sumac. It's not the sumac that everyone thinks of. It is a native ground cover that we are looking at using between some of the spaces right in this area. So it's low, so you can sit in this space and kind of watch over here. Just have access and visibility throughout the whole site is what we're looking at. So again, we'll go back over. We did look at some more, some, maybe some bigger shrubs around the perimeter of the area. That would be like the viburnum that do get a little bit taller, maybe about four feet, five feet tall around the north side of some of these areas, kind of tucked in between the holly trees. It kind of gives them different layering of plant material. But that's where we currently are and what we have developed for a plan and to move forward with parking and planning. If there's any questions, discussion.
I have a question. So, thank you. My question is, have you taken into account the amount of deer that we get in this neighborhood? Because they come out to bark in terms of these planting selections? Are they pretty deer resistant?
There's really not a whole lot that is deer resistant at all in some of these, in these communities. Unfortunately, we do the best that we can. Again, this is a preliminary list that we have developed. And definitely if there's things that, that people know would, would work a little bit better, we're more than welcome to, or more than happy to take a look at that. Absolutely.
I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be important.
Sure, sure, absolutely. There's deer when we were out there, yeah.
Right, there are deer everywhere.
Uh huh, yep.
I, I have a few questions. This is Jerry Lee, but I also thank you for the presentation and the work. My first question is actually for Barb and Kayla as to whether the town arborist has had an opportunity to review the proposed preliminary planting list.
Unless he saw it online, I have not specifically shared it with him, but we can certainly do that.
All right, and then my next question is related, which is, what is the timing of when we anticipate submitting the mandatory referral? And also, looking in the packet, there was language about how you cannot, once submitted, amend your mandatory referral plan. And I wanted to understand that a little better.
So, and Mike, feel free to jump in here, but mandatory referral is an advisory process. They have 60 days to act on an application. So once that application is in the cycle, that is what they will act on. So if there are, my understanding is if there are changes to the plan, then you start over with mandatory referral. You file a new application.
Okay, so if I'm understanding you correctly, essentially what you're advising is we want to make sure that the plan is what we want before we submit it. Because once we submit it, we really can't make changes unless we want to go back to square one.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand.
The language that, the language that is in your agenda packet comes directly from the mandatory referral section of Montgomery Planning's website. So, so Mike, if there were changes in plantings, because there's certain things that Montgomery Planning is looking for, can you speak to what can and cannot change without setting you back to square one?
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you.
And to give this a con, to give this a concrete element, if, for example, the okamis were switched out for cayennatus, same, same scale, same flowering, period roughly, and so on. But a native versus a, a non-native.
Yeah, so what typically happens, this is kind of a unique project in that the only reason that this is going to mandatory referral is because it is a residential property that is becoming part of a public property. So mandatory referral is, I think I said in several of the meetings I've been in, is a, is, it's kind of like government checking government, if you will. So, all that they are looking at on a plan, so let's just say schools, right? The big schools that we work on, the libraries that we work on, all of those different things, go to mandatory referral for design input and approval by the planning board. Now, the mandatory referral itself is only an advisory. You can take these comments and you can just, you can say thank you very much and do none of them at all from a planning board. This, this is strictly advisory. The only thing that is regulatory from a mandatory referral is the forest conservation law. And forest conservation law, believe it or not, does not apply to this project because the size of the property is too small for mandatory referral. So you don't have anything on this project that could send you back to mandatory referral.
Oh, that's very helpful. And so, am I to understand that the amount of detail in terms of this conceptual plan that you've provided us, is that adequate to submit for mandatory referral? Or do we need to produce additional materials?
Yeah, so mandatory referral, again, if you look at the checklist, it's absolutely overwhelming. Because you're comparing things like this small 5,000 square foot park to Woodward High School, to, I mean, we're talking $120 million projects to a $150,000 project. And so they just have a general checklist that we have to comply with. We have already met with Park and Planning and talked with the, with the reviewers of this area. And they're very supportive of this project and said that they will do what they can to just take this along as quickly as possible and as easily as possible. Things like stormwater management right now are not required for this project. Lighting design is not required. Traffic studies are not required. So there's just a whole slew of things that we don't do for a project like this. We will probably refine some things a little bit more. We'll have an existing conditions plan. Again, we'll have the lay, the layout, the grading plan. We'll have a landscape plan. The planting plan, again, is preliminary. What we typically submit, I'll keep going back to schools. And we do a lot of public schools from Montgomery County. We do a lot of the fire stations. We do a lot of the libraries that we have. Those landscape plans and all, they rarely become what is built at the very end. There's things that get moved around because you have so much construction. Typically, a mandatory referral is supposed to be submitted when the drawings are at 30% complete. So if you kind of think about it that way, from a completion standpoint, there's a lot of wiggle room afterward to kind of fine tune and, and move the project forward. This is an overall global, does this work with, with, with the county? But there's not a lot. This is such a small project and unique.
Just to understand then, are you saying, are we 30% planned? In other words, we're ready to move this?
Yeah, so the way that we had this set up, and obviously you're, you're a little bit unique in that you're kind of a governing body under, with another governing body. So we're trying to get from one to the other. The first step is to come to the, the community and to the commission of the community, get their input, your input, get your blessing, and then we move to the next step. So we still have a couple of weeks of just putting documents and things like that together, the applications, notifications, everything else that we have to do is part of a mandatory referral. But this is the preferred concept that we would move forward in this type of setting.
Thank you. That, that definitely helped me out with the mandatory referral.
Well, as I understand it, the mandatory referral, whatever we get from them, it's not mandatory that we adhere to.
That's correct.
So there's no reason we can't move forward with certain steps in the 60 days that will elapse. One of those will be referral of the actual planting plan to our arborist. And it might be wise for us to also seek the input from the conservation trust at this stage. And as alluded to in my earlier question, I think it's likely that they will recommend that we switch out the non-natives for natives.
Sure.
It seems to me if we do so, even if the mandatory referral were a more constrained undertaking, so long as we do it in a way that the trees are of the same size, shape, general scale.
That's correct, yes. We, there's nothing regulatory about the mandatory referral process other than, like I said, the forest law, which does not apply to the conditional, to the mandatory referral to this property due to the size of the property.
Okay, so I've got, this is Philly, I have several questions. First is, what is the plan for putting any type of ground cover down in the area which is not being built up?
And we're talking about, I can go back and share my screen again here.
No, not the circle. I'm talking about everything else. It's outside of the limited.
Oh, the natural areas.
The natural areas, outside of disturbance.
So you're talking about in this area, perhaps, in this? So right now, the, the plan is to either do possibly maybe another phase for the planting out there, deal with the invasives first, and then come back to that. But the, as part of this project, it is not to do a full planting plan for the rest of the property.
But won't that leave the town now to have to maintain this thing? Until we can get this planting plan done, it'll be a lot of extra maintenance, getting rid of stuff. I thought we had already tried to knock down the invasives. But I'm just, speaking to my fellow council members, I just think that's going to be a big drain on town resources if they have to go through periodically and rip all that junk out of there versus putting some type of ground cover in while we've got the chance.
And should I, you guys want me to speak to that still?
Well, I think it would be helpful to hear your professional opinion on how we preserve the natural state while we're still in a planning process.
Keeps us from having the invasives come back. Exactly.
They're back.
I think we're going to be fighting invasives for the rest of our lives in an urban center, is what we have a condition of. To go in and remove the invasives on a property and to reestablish plantings is substantial undertaking that I honestly don't think you have a budget for, for something like that. Right now, you're tackling a big picture item, which is that bamboo. That's such a huge thing to take care of. I have spoken with the contractor that is working on the bamboo. She gave me a couple of other invasive species. But to go in and do a whole invasive species removal plan and then do a planting of a ground cover, if something is, to do a, to go in and remove everything, that would be a substantial sediment control permit because you're disturbing the entire ground out there. So you're into a bigger permit process. We're trying to stay under as many of the permitting obstacles as we can, won't be in the sediment control. So if we go in there and start removing things like that, then we are triggering a larger sediment control permit. To outcompete invasive species, as you probably know, the bamboo is a substantial undertaking. And the establishment period takes years to do something like that. So I would just, to me, they're, they're kind of two, two different items to deal with. One, you're dealing with this developed area, which is the area where the house was. And per the easement, the, the space that we can work in right now. Then you have the rest of the property, which is to remain in a natural state. I just think that that would be a substantial task for the, for the town to take on. That's just my, my take on that.
I would guess that no matter what, what way you slice it, the town is really going to be burdened with $10,000 to $15,000 worth of maintenance every year for, forever. Really just trying to tackle invasives and weeding this out. I'm not sure that matters that much, what you get at your first, but that's a big challenge.
I, I wholeheartedly believe in community improvement days.
Any further discussion from the council?
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe to tee this up in a proper fashion.
Chris, can I ask two more questions?
No, we'll reopen it for council discussion, but we have to decide what we're, what we're moving here. I will entertain a motion to approve the need feedback on the concept. Submission of the recommended park design to Montgomery Planning for the mandatory referral process. Recommended park design being what we have in front of us as the circular defined spaces concept. Do I hear such a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. So the recommendation is essentially to move forward with the mandatory referral process based on the plans we have in front of us. Now, we'll reopen it on that basis to further council discussion.
Okay, so my next thing was along, I guess I'll call it the west side, the side without the screening. Any thoughts about screening there? I know we've talked about this in the past, but we've got one homeowner that used to have some type of screening and now has nothing. And one homeowner that has a lot of screening.
Or are we talking about the east? Make sure I'm still.
East side, I'll call.
Or on the east side, yeah.
There was pointing out that there are a couple of sheds that are, that were kind of hidden behind bamboo before, and now they're out in the open. And I was kind of in line with the question, if Phil doesn't mind me piggybacking on this one. I had a similar question. I was wondering if maybe like some of the hollies and other things might be strategically placed, so if you're kind of picturing yourself between like certain houses or even the roadway out there, that they could be put where like the sheds and other things may not be as visible, because you might have a holly or something like that that's kind of blocking the view without, without resorting to like a whole, like a row of like evergreen, non-native kind of screening trees, like the usual landscaping thing, but just use them more of the natural tree.
And you're talking about to screen the adjacent property or sheds, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a couple of sheds on the left, and I think the neighbor to the east has remarked about this. And I think the neighbor across the street has remarked about this as well. So there might be a way to kind of strategically place things that don't lose their leaves so that you just so that you just don't notice them as much as you do now when it's wide open out there.
I I think that, I believe that this area opened up on the east side due to the invasive species removal. If I'm not mistaken, Barb might go speak to it a little bit more, but I believe that's what did occur on the east side of the property.
I believe that's correct, Mike.
Yeah, the the property on the on the east, so this property where this house is right here, this is the person's garage. Right here.
This is um, right, isn't the V.
And so their views are actually out to the rear. They are approximately from the garage, from the corner of the garage to the built space or I believe a little over a hundred feet away. So that's a substantial distance, uh especially when you have all the canopy coverage along this prop, along this property to start looking at possibly screening on the east side. I I would just caution that that, I I'm not really convinced that that that's a necessary uh screening to occur versus a property that's um, you know, twenty-five feet or forty feet where we have decks and things on the uh west side. So I believe this is a really a different setting completely on the east side.
Where that stair step is, is actually some decks and some other areas that they.
Yeah. Sure. And and again, you know, being being a good neighbor also means that you can plant on your property as well. So that that no one's, you know, right? I mean, you you can plant all back here. You can plant on on your property as well. You know, you have the, you have the right to maintain yours. So I I would caution, the the more planting that occurs, the la, the more that's gonna pull from the budget that you have. So I would just maybe caution.
I wasn't really suggesting more, just more, just like, uh maybe just trying to eye the placement where maximum effect kind of blocking just with a a single or a double tree, not um not not a very unnatural row like a plant. Which agrees that could be, that should really be if if um adjacent homeowner wants that, they should do that themselves. But but the the natural trees could be kind of shifted, so.
I see, I see.
Point of clarification, none of this will be an issue before the planning commission, correct?
That that's correct, yes.
Um, if I could, A, comment on that discussion um between Phil and Stephen and and Mr. Norton. Are you Mr. Norton?
I, yeah.
I think also it's a good thing to remember that the town can iteratively add plantings over time. We do have an arboretum budget. We can consider um encouraging the arborists in the committee to add in a certain amount each year, you know, to um of plantings to the parks if we so choose. So I just want to say that the planting doesn't have to be a once and done kind of plan. It's something you can improve upon over time, especially once you do the initial work, you'll get a better sense of space and what you.
Absolutely.
I think that's a really strong, I think that's a really great point. Um, you know, everyone loves to do, everyone love, well, not everyone, but a lot of people like to garden. They like to plant. They like to do those things. And what what we did and what our focus was, was to help um the vision of the the built area, if you will, the developed area of the site. And right, you can definitely go and do some more planting later, invasive species removal. All those types of things can still be done. This is not a permitted, done forever kind of thing. So you can definitely do as you like.
And at the last POSCO meeting, um, some of the people on the POSCO committee, which is Parks and Open Space, said that they would be interested in contributing trees that could be planted in this area once the initial work is completed. So I still think there should be a process through which they can contribute to a fund and the arboretum committee can decide what they want to plant. They're still interested in doing that as well.
Sure, yeah. Um, I have two other points. Um, one is a a process point that um I don't remember when the town posted this particular concept plan up. Was it just with this agenda or has it been up um for public visibility sooner?
It was just with the agenda packet.
Okay, so I just think that we want to make sure that whatever action we take tonight, we're leaving enough room for public input. If this has only been out for a few days, then I don't think we should take this proposal, the specific plan. I don't, I think we should not take any action tonight without giving a little more time for the community to um view it and perhaps provide additional input if they want to. So that's just a comment on my part to the rest of the council.
It seems that, I mean, this is the this the concept that was decided in the two meetings.
Yes, we got a lot of input from the public that led us toward this concept, but now there's a lot more um specificity that the designer has proposed to us. And I'm just saying, yeah, we as a council could make a decision that, yes, this is exactly what we want to move forward with. Let's send this to the mandatory referral process. Or we could give ourselves thirty days to the next meeting, see if we get any additional public input and then choose to vote on this at our next regular meeting in April and then send it forward for mandatory referral. What I don't know is whether um, what kind of schedule we had in mind, Barb, and and how that might impact that schedule.
I mean, I think this, the, I think Mike was hoping to, we were hoping to get a decision tonight so they could start pulling things together. And the hope was that we would probably be through mandatory referral before the end of the fiscal year. But obviously, that schedule is largely determined by you. So if you're not comfortable doing it.
So there there's, I guess, a couple of things with that, with that question and what you're raising. Um, if i- if it's a design, let's say that the concept plan itself, if you, are you suggesting that we keep that open for more comments? Or are you talking about potentially just the the more detailed plans that we provided to support the doc, the concept? I guess is my question.
I don't want to get bogged down in semantics, but these were concepts at the time we put three of them out.
Right.
This is now a proposal.
Yeah.
And it is for all in practical intents and purposes, because that's what people had an opportunity to comment on in an open meeting here in several weeks of public display at the post office. That is essentially what we're now labeling instead of a concept, a proposal.
Right.
In reaction to eighty-five percent of the people who saw it, either preferring it or being neutral.
That mandatory referral allows us space to make changes, as you have told us, right? That is, we have sixty days before it reaches uh the mandatory referral ac- action and we can make adjustments as we go, if I understood you correctly. Is that true?
All right, let's let's maybe, let's take this two steps at at a time because I think what the mayor is pointing out is is a a good point. So this concept essentially has not changed since the community meeting and since the uh survey was put out. What we did was we added, and as I'm talking, um, there's something that I told Barb I would do and I didn't do. Um, that um, we basically added support documents to the concept is what we did. We showed how the grading would work. We showed, you know, some potentials for the landscape, but the concept itself has not changed in several, in a couple of months. So I do want to point, I I do kind of agree with the mayor on that, that the the two drawings that I showed you earlier are basically just support documents that we can make this concept work. That's a big thing. We have to make sure we can actually build this thing. So um that, I do want to point that out. Now, mandatory referral, I'll go back to that for a second. When you file, that that's the sixty days for Park and Planning to get through their process. We can't start changing the drawings while they're reviewing them.
Okay.
Right? We can be, we can be changing the drawings and we can be advancing the drawings. It's not going back to Park and Planning. So if we want to fine tune the landscape, i- if we don't want the 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 cherries there and you want other red buds, that doesn't matter. That's not going back to Park and Planning. That's going on to the final construction drawings.
All right, so so Barb, I guess I have a follow-up question. Is there anything in our contract with Norton Landscape um in terms of scheduling that do not allow for an additional thirty days if we choose to want it before we send it to mandatory referral, referral?
I I can just, I I just want to say one more thing about that. So it it does take us a little little bit of time to put that mandatory referral together. We are trying to get on the the March schedule because it's sixty days from when the intake review, from when it's accepted for intake. So we have a seminal process, we have a pre-screening process, we have an intake process, and then we have a full review process. The full review process starts at sixty days. There is no um planning board hearings in August. If we start backing into dates, we we could be into September or so. If we don't kind of start to advance these drawings, it's kind of one of, that's one of our concerns on our end. It's just trying to keep this going.
Yeah. Do they, do you have a monthly schedule? Is that it? I'm sorry, Tom. Is it a monthly schedule that you can submit?
Well, you you can submit it at any, you can submit, it's a, it's a daily schedule. And what happens is there's planning board hearing every Thursday where they take X amount of of plans to that. But once you have to go to Development Review Committee, um after the intake process, you go to Development Review Committee. That's where you get everyone's comments and then you address comments, what have you. Then they schedule the planning board hearing at the Development Review Committee.
Uh, Barb, to ask you a question about whether there are any fiscal implications for extending beyond the end of this year.
The timing of the work, I, there's not a a fiscal issue in terms of the dollars are what the dollars are that you all have allocated to this project.
And the grant we got doesn't have a time parameter on it.
Right, what it does affect is what we assume is spent this fiscal year versus next fiscal year. So there's some timing issues. Um, I mean, those can certainly be worked out. I guess what I'm unclear of is, and kind of to echo the mayor's comments, we put the three concepts out. We had a community meeting. We advertised it extensively. We had ninety-one percent of people who responded saying they either liked what was concept one um or were neutral about it. So that very heavily influenced what we brought forward to you tonight is based on the community input. What I'm unclear of is what are we leaving open? Is it, to kind of get to Mike's point, are we leaving open, going back to Phil Normandy and getting his input on trees? Or are we talking about reopening up this entire concept process? Because those are two very different things, both, I think, for Norton's contract as well as for.
I I'll just say, yeah, I'll just say what I'm suggesting is twofold. One, let it percolate, see if we get any additional feedback from the community. And number two, this council has received repeated vehement complaints of moving too fast and without enough communication with the public and the opportunity for public input on basic things like trash removal. So this is a brand new park that we're about to build in town. I think it's worth the extra thirty days, forty-five days, when you factor it all in to make sure the community gets a chance to see what they selected before we send it to the county. And that's said on my part, I'll let others speak.
I I think we've been through the process and it sounds like we should move forward. Um, I mean, Mr. Norton, tell us, please, if we don't move forward, what are the implications from your end? I mean, it seems like um you wanted to finish this, uh, there's no meeting in August. You wanted to finish it by July. If it's October, is that gonna be a a problem for you?
Oh, from our end, it is not a a problem. It's just we, you know, once we start these projects, you know, we've got community engagement right now. We have everyone's attention. It's nice to keep that momentum going. You start adding those things in, you start, the delays start stacking up. That it's really a a concern that I have. It's nice to kind of keep things rolling along.
So that the community can see progress at a efficacious speed.
Yeah, I've been for. Yeah, all the public projects we've worked on, I I think that this is moving. And I think the outreach that's been done so far has, I mean, in my opinion, has been very well done uh by the town.
And and I I want to say, I think the outreach we've done thus far has been excellent and a really good model. I just think that when it comes to community outreach and communication, it's sort of like real estate, location, location, location. And with this outreach, 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 communication, communication, communication. We we will get complaints if we do this tonight. I'm just saying.
What is it that the community would say?
I don't know, because there are only two community members here tonight, besides us, or three.
A lot of this plan is not, like if they say they don't want these boulders around the open space, they don't want these logs in the middle, they don't want so many benches. I mean, those are things that are within our perimeter to change when we go to final drawings and bid it. And I don't think any of that's locked in at this point in time.
I guess that was, you're right, that was, that was my question earlier, is what what exactly are we putting out there?
That does say, okay, finish, uh, sorry. Mike, you're, um, you're saying?
Oh, no, I'm I'm just trying to to understand, wh- what are we, what are we seeking? Is it input on the planting material or is it input on the logs?
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we ask for any particular input other than to, we we posted it publicly for this meeting. And I think we should announce to the community that we are considering sending this version, this plan, this proposal to the county for mandatory referral in April. And it's there, available for the community to see. Let it percolate for the month. And then in April, we can vote on it, sort of like the way we currently introduce an ordinance and then thirty days later actually act on it. To me, it's pretty precipitous to receive this tonight for the first time. Many people are seeing this for the first time tonight. I saw it for the first time Friday night. So um to me, it's a lot to ask of us in the community to say, we're gonna vote on it tonight. And then it goes into the county process and can't be touched again for sixty days before we can make any other changes. We've committed ourselves to something that we saw for the first time Friday night.
I'm not sure how you saw it for the first time Friday night, though. This has been for a couple of months now.
The plan, I think she.
No, I'm talking about the the chosen plan as opposed to the three concepts. So.
This is the same plan as concept one.
Totally, totally understand that.
Okay, okay.
I'm just suggesting, and it's it's not a complaint about your process, Mr. Norton, please don't misunderstand. I'm really talking to the council because of experiences we have had recently about public communication and letting our community have an opportunity to have a say. If the other council members disagree with me, I'm only one vote.
So.
Well, it's an important point and it may go to the point I was making earlier, although cutting the other way. This was previously promoted as a concept and that has a, that has a connotation. And if we promote it now as the proposal that will go to the county, that carries a different connotation.
Right, and Chris, you're saying proposal. I think this is a proposal from the landscape design firm to us tonight. If we vote to send this to the county, it's no longer a proposal. It's now our chosen design, which we are asking the county to give us advice and consent on. And that's no longer a proposal. That's a chosen, selected design.
But it can be changed.
It could be changed, yeah, but wow, how horrible it would be if we got lots of bad, negative feedback from the community over the next sixty days and had to go back to square one.
But this has been in the post office for weeks.
You're right, but we didn't get a second, I don't, you know, like POSCO, I think, kind of saw it for essentially for the first time. Even though they saw it, you know, we discussed it. And I remember that I don't think anybody actually knew that this was gonna be the chosen design. I mean, certainly, well.
Something differently when it's the single chosen design and there is more detail than when you saw it as one of three possible.
Exactly, exactly. Now, I do have um two quick questions hopefully from Mr. Norton. One is the mulch area. And um are we allowed to use mulch or I thought we had to use the fake wood chips because of uh safety purposes?
It it is called five-bar mulch, so it, that's what it is, yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
It was, the reason I had asked, because it was listed is, um, it was listed as uh. It was, the reason I had asked, because it was listed is, um, it was listed as, uh, wood chips in at least one area.
Hmm, should be the, yeah, should be the, the fiber mulch.
Yeah, it was on the, it was on the second sheet here. Um, and the other question was, um, what drove the decision to change from tiles originally that we saw in concept one to, um, it looks like Flexi paid for the whole thing.
Uh, yeah, wha- what we're, what we became concerned with is, is just too much difference of materials out there on a small site. And it's looking, starting to look disorganized.
Okay. Makes it harder to maintain too, doesn't it with?
Yeah, we, we just, we're, we're thinking it, it might be best to be one material there. I mean, that's a great e- example of what, um, the, one of the board members saying, what you guys talking about? We can change those materials, um, during mandatory referral and come back to the, the board or, or, you know, Barb can, uh, talk to the board about that. The materials themselves are not really set at the planning commission. They look at and say, hearts, you know, on this plan, the way I would look at this, i- if I was the commissioner, is I would say, okay, they've got hardscape, they've got some lawn and they've got a little bit of, uh, wood chip or fiber mulch area. They're meeting their ADA requirements from the, from the public's right of way. Let's, let's move forward. That's how I would think that they would, that this will be kind of seen at the board.
Well, and as you say that, it, it, it reminds me that another potential benefit of, of giving, um, thirty days for public review, I'll call it. Um, we might get some additional unsolicited feedback about, um, future additional enhancements we might want to add. You know, as you said, you haven't done, um, any real changes to the original concept. But we did get a fair amount of comments from the community about other features they'd like to see on the site. So from the council's perspective, either in iteration one or some future iteration, we might want to consider some of those proposals that we have from the community. And now that we're down to one basic concept, the community has the opportunity, I think, to provide more focused input on, you know, what is it they really want to see or use in this kind of a space.
So, so as it is now, I, I, I want to move towards calling the question. It seems to me that if we're gonna vote to extend this for thirty days, that is to, to, to not, uh, send this plan forward for an additional thirty play, thirty days, we need to vote no on the proposal before us. I would be willing to do that, but I do want to really try and suggest that in thirty days, we do go ahead and do it.
Right, yeah. I mean, I guess what I would be proposing is that we announce that this is out for public review and our intent is to vote in April to send this design to mandatory referral. If we're not making any changes tonight.
Are, are we ready to move the question, do you think?
Yes, and I.
We already voted, I thought.
No, no, a, a no vote is to defer this decision to April out of an excess of caution to allow another round of public comment in the context of this is the final design. Still open for comment, but there are no longer any concepts floating around other than this one. Um, promote the heck out of the grading plan and the landscape materials, which are the two new elements. And again, post this in post office and so on. Take, take affirmative steps to, to, uh, gather citizen input and take it up, uh, next month. That's the effect of a no vote. And if that's, if that's your decision, I will commit to taking those steps in an effort to generate additional comment.
Would that just make mandatory referral like ninety-ish days from now instead of sixty-ish days?
Roughly, yes.
Yeah, I just want to point out, if, if we go to, and it, that, that's fine. I completely open everything that you're saying. It's, it's no problem. Uh, but if you vote in April, w- we're not gonna be working on this project until after that vote. Therefore, we need a few weeks after that vote to put the package together for mandatory referrals. We don't do it the next day. So I just want to be kind of, just want to point that out. It might not be a.
That's, that's the case if we vote tonight. So it's.
Yeah, it, it would be April, we'd be putting it in, but right. Yeah. I just want to, yeah. It, it does, it affects the schedule, but that, that's all. Just want to point that out.
Yeah. Couple of points regarding your point, Charlie. I'm sympathetic to it, but I think, um, I think the trash is a little bit of a, not really a real, um, the trash issue is not really comparable to this. I think I would, I would say like the trash in, um, issue that brought a lot of, um, vehement emails out on the listener. But I think this, it was a struggle just to get ninety-one, I think it was, people to pine on this. I think it's because it's, it's really a, it's a tiny little park in the corner of the town. It's on a former residential lot. There's a lot of restrictions on what you can, can and can't do. So I think it's just very limited really what the potential is. I'm not sure that we're gonna get a ton of, um, extra input. Like, I don't mind having it open for that, but I don't see the damage of having that happen concurrent to it going out for mandatory review. Because you're, um, you're really taking something that you had three concepts and you're saying, we're gonna move forward with one as a schematic. Um, and it's not saying it's the final design, it's the final concept. But there's still like a schematic design. These, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but these are like twenty percent drawings. There's still eighty percent probably of work to go. So there's a lot of time to kind of like tooth in a lot of, if there's more feedback. Um, and while all that could be happening, I have to say, like, all the experience I've had working on parks, Garrett Park is far and away the most intense as far as like this idea of like public input of anywhere I've ever seen. Um, and I.
I think that's a good thing.
Uh, I, I, I do and I don't, because I actually.
All right, that's a philosophical discussion. We can have some other time.
Uh, if I may, I, I, I just, I think Stephen has raised potentially a third option, which is that we view, um, we could vote tonight to task the Norton Landscape to continue the development on this concept. In other words, we say, yes, we think that the town has spoken and this is the right concept to move forward with. We could task them to continue the work while it's out for public review. And then in April, we would bring, we would be looking at the final set of materials, I hope, from the landscape group to be able to vote whether to then send it forward for mandatory review. So it's a little bit of a slight twist on what we're voting on tonight. What I heard earlier was that we would be voting to send this to mandatory referral. But we could shape it a little differently to say, hey, we think this is good so far. Yes, go ahead and keep developing while we have this out for public review. And then in April, we're voting on a more final package and whether to send it forward for mandatory referral. And we may or may not get some additional community feedback to inform our April vote. So I, I could go along with something that, that is shaped more like that. Because what I was hearing earlier was we're choosing tonight that this is definitely what we're sending to mandatory referral. But I think if we, um, choose to look at the April vote as we're, we're going to get a more complete package to look at and vote on.
I don't think you're gonna get anything more that's going to inform your, your decision.
And I think all of these components, when we put it out for bid and refine the plan, we can also, I think we're gonna be in a position where we can make changes based on what the budget numbers are, based on what these selections are. So my understanding is this mandatory review process doesn't, doesn't tie us to any of the parameters of this plan, the, the landscape design, the hardscape, the. So I, I, I just think we're wasting time. I mean, we're letting time go and not accomplishing anything to move this forward.
Yeah, I think, I think plan three, as you stated it, uh, is really, I mean, I, I think if we go forward, we achieve the same thing.
Right. Yeah, the point being that when we first talked about this, we would vote tonight and then we wouldn't necessarily review anything again in April. We would have referred everything to the town staff to work with the landscaper and work with the county on mandatory referral. What I'm suggesting is we set another gate in April. And while the landscape design firm is working on more detail to flesh out this conceptual design, we also make it some additional community input. And then we have that gate in April where we vote again, yes, we're actually going to send this forward for mandatory referral or whoa, we got a lot of different input than we were expecting. Let's consider it differently. Maybe, maybe, maybe not.
We can have another gate after mandatory referral. Why don't we just have the gate then? Why do we need to?
That would be a shame to, in my view, to, to devote that much time to something and then go back to square one.
I don't want to move forward. Uh, I don't think, I don't think I'm willing to, I have to talk to Barb about that.
Yeah, no, if, if we, if we completely change the concept, we, we, right. But why talk about it as if we might? Well, yeah. Right. I, I'm suggesting we vote tonight to, to take a preliminary step. And then in April, we could take the more final vote to submit it for mandatory refer, referral after we get a more final package. And after the community has had a month to see what the final design wants.
I, I, I'm gonna not speak for Mike, but kind of speak for Mike. I, I suspect that some of the concern about their proceeding is that they could end up doing rework. And if there is rework, that is obviously billable.
That is a risk.
I'd hate to do that.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's three options there. We could hold on any additional work, vote in April. We could vote tonight and say, you know what? The town had time to, to give input and this is the design. Let's just move forward. Or we could vote to have the second gate and take the risk of the, the work, um, being developed.
Yeah, my hesitation about incurring unnecessary design costs and, and or potential additional design costs. This is a very tight budget anyway, and Mike has counseled us repeatedly on that. I think if this is something that you're not, and there seem to be very conflicting feelings, but I think if you want to leave it open, then I would not have Norton go ahead and proceed with doing design work. I, I just think that's raising the potential of rework that could be avoided.
Okay.
I, I think what I would do is, i- if this is open, because like I was saying, this is so, such a unique project for mandatory referral, whereas, I mean, before we, before I even put together a proposal for this project, I tried to talk to Park and Plan and, and everyone. And I think everyone was like, wow, how, what do we need to take for mandatory referral on this? So, we, we're gonna probably fine tune this some more, but there's a lot of thi- you're, you're gonna end up with the same package in, in, from, from a pretty picture perspective in, in April.
Um, we're just gonna wait. We're just losing time.
You're, you're waiting. I guess what my, what my, the mayor's gonna kill me. Uh, I, I just want to ask, what's gonna change your, your mind? If ten people come out and say flip this a hundred and eighty degrees, what are you gonna do? Are you gonna say yes? Are you gonna ask for the other hundred people to come? Well, I don't under- I guess I don't understand it. What, how much input do you need to actually change? So I don't know the town that well, is why I'm asking. So if you get ten comments o- on this plan, are we gonna take those ten comments? Or do you need fifty comments? Or do you, I, I just, I'm not quite following what's going to change the, the plan from a, from a public perspective?
Or from the council's perspective?
You, you, right. What's, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around that. That's what I'm trying.
Well, that's a good question. Mike, if you knew this town well, you'd know that the chances, the chances of a substantive change are relatively small.
I guess that's why I'm asking.
But the chances that residents perceive that things are moving too fast can raise issues that end up, they, every bit is, um, difficult and time consuming.
Oh, right.
That's, that's the genesis of the.
So it's just kind of slowing down. Let, let it percolate for a little bit and then let's pick it up in April. We don't possibly perceive whole, whole wholesale changes. We're just, let's let everyone see this one more time. It's, I mean, we work in a lot of small Tacoma Park. It's a great one where, right. So it's very similar. I'm just trying to understand what could we, because there's, uh, there's some small things that we could kind of be doing notification lists. I mean, there's some things that we can be working on, but from a design perspective, I'd wanna let this sit for, for a little bit. Um, okay.
Do you have enough for the package you have? Is drawing wise, is it enough to go to mandatory referral with?
I think we would add, so we, like I said, you know, I mean, some of the things we would add, it'd be a cover sheet. It would be fine tuning, you know, some notes, some details. Um, the planting plan might stay how it is. We would probably take the sheet that we're looking at right now. We would have the grading. We'd add some stuff to the legend. I need to go back down through the checklist again, because we don't want to overburden Park and Planning because we want it to move through there i- as easily as possible. The more we give them, the more they're gonna be like, whoa, wait a minute. What, what are we doing here? I, I think we want to kind of keep it as simple as possible, but, um, my, I, I've talked with this reviewer several times on this project and everyone down there is very excited to, to hear this coming. Um, so yeah, I don't see a whole lot of, uh, of, of change from it. Um, I, I just want to be careful of.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't see much change either. I've taken much bigger projects than this and you get like five, six comments and a lot of them are kind of consider this or keep that in mind. It's not really, unless it's a controversial new use, it's not gonna elicit a lot of big comments.
Can you get ADA from both sides? You know, the comment like that would potentially come up. Hey, have you thought about doing this? And that's, that's kind of where it is. Again, it's not a, it's not a Park and Planning issue on this. I, um, I'm just trying to understand, um, what could, what could change, uh, between now and April. I'm trying to maybe think ahead a little bit.
That is to say, if you want to move this forward, then you, the, the, the motion on the floor is that we move this proposal, uh, forward tonight to the mandatory referral process. Meaning that if you don't want to do that for either, either because you want another gate set up, right? Which is Geraldine's third plan, or you just don't want to, then you have to vote no, right?
Well, or you just want to give it a month to percolate and then choose, choose to move it. That would be a no, yes, which would be to defer the vote to April.
It's not really a no though. It's just not voting a yes. I feel like it's just not.
As it's worded, as, as the motion is worded, it's a no.
Yeah. It's a no for the motion on the table. Unless we want to amend the motion.
Um, do we need, let's, do we have any comments from the, our citizens at all? Were you, what?
I'm sorry?
Comments from our citizens? I think you had deferred that. And I have, I have one more after that.
Any comments on whether this should go forward to the county tonight or in April? If, if you do, you have to do it there. I'm sorry. Name and address.
Hi, Renee, one one three, continued road being, um, I don't see any reason why it should not move forward tonight because the thing that seems like it's frequently blabbed to me is the fact that it's mandatory, even though there's nothing hidden in this mandatory.
And you've been working on the, with the community on the design? Sorry, I just, just to understand what you're.
No, I, no.
But you live near it?
He lives right here in the place that Stephen refers to.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Thanks.
So, um, yeah, so am I really coming to just on that?
Thank you. Hi.
Did he have other comments?
May I, may I add some additional comments that are not related to the motion to?
About the park?
Yeah, about the park.
I, I think we better, I think we better get this off the table first, if you don't mind, before we lose the thread of the. Okay. The motion was to approve submission of the recommended park design to Montgomery Planning for the mandatory referral process. The recommended park design being that which was included in your packet. Essentially, concept one plus a grading plan and a landscape plan. All in favor of the motion to submit? Um, let's call the roll, if you would, please.
Sure. Um, Councilmember Short?
No.
Councilmember Max?
Yes.
Councilmember Paskowski?
Can I go last?
You can go last. Uh, Councilmember Bennett?
No.
Uh, Councilmember Eisenstadt?
Yes.
And Councilmember Paskowski?
I'll say yes with a caveat if I can.
No, you can't caveat.
No caveat.
No caveats.
No caveats.
Now, it will however, pursuant to my remarks earlier, we'll get this uh, large sheet into the post office lobby. We will. uh, large sheet into the post office lobby. We will circulate copies of the grading plan and the landscape plan. Uh, we will refer to the Garrett Park Conservation Trust, to the Arboretum Committee and to the Consulting Arborists in order to get, um, feedback. Which we can continue to get. Okay?
Sounds good.
Next item on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report, including the financial report. Oh, well, let me, let me pause there. Rick, did you have anything further?
Renee, 1132 Rookby, again, um, I just wanted to comment some on the, the design, but a lot of the conversation that occurred tonight sort of makes it less critical. But one thing was whether or not, in relation to your comment about deer, whether or not there's the fencing in this plan that you're, that is submitted. And that is, uh, in relation to both the sort of exposed yield that we have in our house and then also some of the, I think on the same thing in the past. Don't put words on us now, but she's still her herself. But, um, so that was the second thing, the fencing. And, uh, and the eventually putting in some sort of, uh, evergreen coverage or something. And the third thing is there's still, I was wondering if there's anything that's going to be done with the pit and the pipe that comes out of it that's on the property. So, uh, I don't know. You know, Mr. Robert, did you address that or did you ask anything about the, the pipe that's there?
Do we know anything about a pipe?
All right. Are you talking about the stormwater inlet down at the road?
No.
No.
Pretty much in the middle of the property is a hole and then there's a vertical pipe about three inches in diameter with, that's capped, that's sitting there. And I asked about this before and was told that it wasn't there, but I was just walked up there a few days ago and it's there.
I've seen it before. I mean, it looks like it was maybe to a dry well or something, because there's a sunken area around.
Yeah.
Very near the pipe. Yeah, I mean, we'll have to, I guess, look at it.
It's like more like an underground storage tank with fuel or something.
Yeah.
I doubt it, because they did have a fuel oil tank right next to the house. Yes.
Yeah.
But those are sometimes put in as a sort of remediation effort to, so you don't have to bust a leaky underground storage.
Yeah, I'm aware of the area you're talking about. Our maintenance supervisor and I looked at it some time ago. Our assumption was the same as yours, that it perhaps there was a fuel tank, underground fuel tank at some point. Mike, are you familiar with, we pointed it out, I think during the pre-bid meeting potentially, but I don't know if you walked back there and saw it.
I, yeah, I'll have to go back out there and, and take a look. I'm wondering maybe if the, maybe a tank or something potentially collapsed or something? I don't know.
Yeah, kind of. To me, it kind of looks like there's a depression, something collapsed underneath, whatever that something was.
Okay, we, we can definitely, uh, take a look at that. And I'm sorry, what were, you had two other comments on there?
One, Mike, was fencing, which, um.
That was, yeah, that was the thing that Barb asked me to address that I, I didn't, um, on there. So, uh, w- we are going to, we're not proposing a, uh, perimeter fence on this property. However, we will be looking into, uh, the six by six posts, demarcating the, the corners of the properties. Uh, along with me, I don't think I still have a screen. Let me see if I still have a screen up here. I'll share real quick. Let me share this. Uh, so we would basically have a, uh, be a six by six natural post on each of the corners and possibly one in each middle, so that you would know, uh, along these properties when you were on the property versus off of the property. But we're not, uh, looking at, uh, fencing this. You could, that could easily be a third to a half of the complete budget defenses property.
Adjacent homeowners are free to erect fences as they do adjacent.
Yeah, right.
pine woods or Cambria Park or any other park.
No, just before I do something, it made sense to find out what the town.
Certainly.
The motivation for it.
Sure.
I don't think.
I think you had three. You had three questions or, or no?
You could ask about.
This really was the fence, um, perhaps more of, uh, evergreen planting along the property line, but that's seems like sort of an ongoing process, this possibility. And, uh, and the whole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully you don't find it's an archaeological site.
Yeah, wasn't, um, a fuel tank underground part of the demolition permit that we got?
There, yes, there was.
Right.
But that depression existed before the demolition of the property of the house occurred. It was already there.
Thank you.
Mike, I think you're free to go. I think, are we moving on to the next item, Mayor Keller?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
So Barbara, given that the bottom line on the Family Leave Act is that it's put off quite a bit. Maybe you could just summarize that briefly on.
Yes, um, so you all might recall back in, um, at your January meeting, Kayla provided a briefing on the Maryland Time to Care Act, which was enacted in 2022. And the Associated Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program, as she reported at that time, um, the standing effective date for employers to report hours and wages and remit payment to the trust that would be set up is currently July 1st, 2025. On February 14th, Kayla, who has been tracking progress on this issue extensively, received an email from the state advising that they were, the Department of Labor was requesting that the General Assembly approve a delay in the implementation of the Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program. That, to the best of my knowledge, the, uh, the General Assembly has not acted on that yet. Obviously, that window for them to do so is closing. Um, but if they, General Assembly does approve what the Department of Labor is requesting, then payroll deductions would be deferred until January 1st of 2027 and benefits would become available to employees in the state on January 1st, 2028. The other thing I just wanted to remind everybody is that the nominating meeting will be held at seven o'clock PM on Wednesday, March 19th. Um, it will be held both in person at Town Hall and also people can participate virtually via Zoom. Um, and the deadline for candidate nominations by petition is 4:00 PM on Wednesday, March 26th. And the last item I just wanted to mention is back in May, um, the Town Council authorized a one-year extension, um, on all three of the town's, um, tree service contracts. Um, that motion authorizing those extensions included direction to staff to issue a request for proposals in sufficient time to allow for updated pricing before the renewed contract expires on June 30th of this year. Um, that RFP was issued on February 26th and posted to the state procurement website on this date and proposals are due on March 31st. And so unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
I have two questions about the maintenance team activities. Some time ago, the Town Council had wanted some paving to be put in at the edge of Rookabye and is it Wells Park? For pe- for kids, parents who are dropping off their kids to not drop them off in the street.
Yeah.
And I thought we wanted some pavers put along that front end of Rookabye in the park.
Yeah, I know Mayor Keller has talked to the maintenance supervisor about that. So to the best of my knowledge, it is on his, their to-do list, but perhaps the mayor has more current information than I do.
Just quickly, the second question that I have is, um, we had talked about putting a glass door with a buzzer at the entrance of the town office. And I'm just wondering if that's moving forward at all.
Um, I believe Mayor Keller had also had a discussion with Mr. Miller about that, so I will defer to him.
Yeah, if we can get, um, estimates to fold into next year's capital budget, maybe so.
So George is getting estimates?
Uh, I believe he is. He was asked to.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It reminded me of another one. I thought at one point we had, um, asked the maintenance staff to do a survey of all the street lighting around town. They were trying to find where there were gaps between the pole lights.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check with George on that.
Yeah. Came up when we were discussing the, the cobras and the tears and teardrops and all that business.
Anything further on the financials or Town Manager Report? All right, the next order of business is adoption of Ordinance Number 25 dash one fiscal 2025 Budget Amendment Number One. This, well, I don't want to steal Barbara's thunder. This was introduced at the last meeting.
Yeah, I, nothing has changed, so it's the same, um, as the mayor indicated, this ordinance was introduced. I'm at the special town council meeting on February 24th. It's identical to what you considered at that time.
So we're decreasing revenue by $287,000?
Yes, it's, if you recall, it was because of the timing of the two state grants. And where things lie currently with those two projects, one was Yendel uh, Park, which is $250,000 that is being removed and the renovation of Town Hall, $300,000. This is simply a timing issue. That funding is still in place.
So we will catch up with just the following year?
Probably with, well, it, it depends on the pace of the project. The reimbursement grant, so it depends how these projects progress.
So is there a time constraint if we're, if we're gonna get reimbursed at first deadlines by which we have to have completed this work?
Um, for the Community Parks and Playground Grant, which is for Yendel, there's also program Open Space Funds that has a window of five years, so that was awarded as of, um, July 1st. Um, usually, I don't know that there's a hard and fast date on the legislative bond initiatives, but normally they want to see substantial progress within a matter of a couple of years. Otherwise, they're somewhat looking at probably giving the funding. Yeah, they want to allocate funding to people who are going to use it essentially.
We, we don't physically or digitally have that money, right?
No, um, this is not like the, this is not like the ARPA funds where they deposited. These are all strictly reimbursement.
Okay.
Programs. I think in very rare circumstances, um, on the legislative bond initiatives, they may try to work with you or, and the same may be true of the other grants, but certainly we have the financial wherewithal to move forward. So typically, those are done on a reimbursement basis. I know on the community parks and playground, they like to do one single reimbursement unless there's a compelling reason to do otherwise, just because of the paperwork involved.
So can I move to adopt this? Good. Like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2025 dash one for fiscal year 2025 Budget Amendment Number One.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. It is their discussion. This is essentially what we've discussed on a couple of occasions and is for all practical intents and purposes, the material on the last page of, of this, um, attachment, together with the boilerplate. Discussion, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We move then to Ordinance 2025 dash two. This is the introduction of, uh, the ordinance, which has been discussed previously on variances from town building regulations. Barbara, do you want to summarize that?
Yeah, so this is, um, with one small change, this is the same version of the ordinance that you all reviewed at your meeting on February 10th. Um, the, the single change has been that there was a, um, desire expressed on that day to um, increase the size of the sign that would be physically posted on the property. I did follow up with the maintenance staff. This is on page three of the ordinance, um, under section two, public hearing. Frank Guzio of our maintenance staff did measure our current signs. Those are, are 24 by 30 inches. Um, so what the change language would, um, require is that the sign be at, at least the size of what we have been using currently. Um, just very briefly, um, just to refresh everybody's memory, um, section 403 subsection B two, um, which has always been in place, requires that a public hearing be held on any variance application and that a written opinion be made public. Um, what this ordinance would do is a number of things in that section. It would require that a complete application be received at least 20 days before the date of the next town council meeting. Additionally, the town will be required to provide notice of the hearing to the abutting and confronting property owners at least 15 days before the hearing. And the town, it would actually formalize what has been the practice, which is to post a sign on the property. That is the subject of the variance application. Um, additionally, one of the other changes this ordinance would put into effect is, um, requiring, under certain circumstances, that, um, someone applying for a variance would be required to submit a boundary survey prepared by a licensed Maryland surveyor if the proposed building or addition is to be located within two feet of a setback line. We removed some language that was potentially confusing in section um, 403C. Um, I think as you all know, the kind of the standard for a variance is generally either one, an exceptional condition of a lot, and two, that that causes difficulties or hardship. That is what is stated in section 403A of the code as things stand today. Section 403C has language, um, which will be removed specifically that the lot cannot accommodate the building sought to be erected. And the town attorney recommended that the language in section 403C be removed to avoid any confusion. Um, in section 403C also, there's a reference to the existence of nearby non-conforming uses, um, which should likely be non-conforming structures. And then in section 403 subsection C 1.21, there is not the opportunity, as that section is currently worded, for someone to request a variance from that standard. The town attorney advised, as we've discussed before, that a variance must at least be considered. Um, so that language in that section has been, um, amended to provide for a variance consideration. And then lastly, in, uh, section 403F, there's just some clarifying language that the effective date of the town council's decision on a variance application is the date that the town council actually issues its written decision. And that's basically kind of the changes that this ordinance would put in place if it's adopted.
This is a written decision, uh, when the, um, attorney, for town's attorney issues a document?
It, it's the date that you all basically approve it actually being issued. Um, so our practice has been, you all basically vote and basically your motion is to have, direct the town attorney to draft a written opinion that either approves or dis- or denies the variance request. He prepares it. That is then circulated for you all to review and comment on. Once we are confident that you all have approved the draft as presented by the town attorney or, or modified, then basically it is, it is signed and it, that is the time it is issued.
And that circulation can be by email?
It can be by email. And that is how we have done it. So the most recent variance that you all granted, um, several of you had some suggested modifications to the town attorney's initial draft. That, that took, process took several weeks. Um, so the actual issuance date was the date that it actually was sent out. We do send those out via GPML and the town forum.
Any further discussion? Uh, no, we haven't, we haven't had a motion yet, have we? We need a.
I'll move that, uh, we adopt, uh,
Introduce.
Or introduce, I'm sorry. We introduce ordinance number 2025 dash two, variances from town building regulations.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of introduction of ordinance number 2025 dash two, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Um, the one thing I just wanted to mention is with this, um, ordinance being introduced, it will be sent to the county council, as we've discussed before, under land use article section 20 dash 509. Building regulations need to be provided to the county council for comment at least 30 days before they're adopted. Building regulations need to be provided to the county council for comment at least thirty days before their adoption. So we will be, we will be doing that within the next day or so.
Neil still be good for that for April meeting then?
I need to count how many days there are between this meeting and April.
April fourteen. Goes out in the next couple of days. We're fine. The next order of business is introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-five dash three, amending chapter four of the town code to update building permit procedures and other steps. Barbara, do you want to start us off on this?
Sure, I did just want to call to your attention as my kind of opening comments is that there are two versions of the ordinance, not two versions, but they're labeled differently. So attachment one is a clean version of the ordinance. In attachment two, there are embedded comments because there have been some suggested language changes for a variety of reasons. Some of these you directed at your meeting in February. Others were things that the town attorney and I discussed. So if you can kind of look at attachment two, beginning on page two. This, one of the things, as the town attorney was reviewing my comments from the February meeting, is that further on in the ordinance draft, there were references to setbacks and referencing property lines. The way that that language read, the town attorney was concerned that it, it may, might suggest that depending on where someone cited the house, that it could influence the setback that was required. I reached out to the chair of our land use advisory committee when the town attorney raised this concern last week. And Mr. Martin's suggestion was that we include a definition of the depth of a lot. So that is the origin of the change that is in section one oh two at the bottom of page two of attachment two. I'm kind of going to page four. On February, on your February tenth meeting, there was discussion about changing stopped, the section read, a permit may be revoked if the work has stopped for thirty days. There was a suggestion that that sentence be changed to read substantially stopped. The town attorney did express some concern about including substantially stopped. I think he understood the origin of the proposed change, but he basically noted that unless substantially stopped is defined, it essentially is, is going to trigger a problem. It opens it up to debate. And for that reason, because he had that concern, that sentence currently reads the way it did before your meeting in February. Just kind of continuing down, there was, in section seven on page four, at your meeting in February, you had made some minor language changes. There was references periodically to construction materials, construction debris. You all asked that all of those references be changed to read construction materials and debris. You also suggested that the list of items A through G under section seven be reordered so that the tree protection plan was a little bit higher up to emphasize that more, that anything related to parking be consolidated, and that anything related to construction materials and debris kind of follow one after the other. So that was the change to that section. And section nine, still on page four, and I believe it might have been commercial races issued, there was previous language that said, prior to approval of a final inspection, the property owner shall be responsible for restoring any disrupted area. You all rightly noted that we don't kind of do an official inspection. That is really done by the county. The town attorney and I did discuss this. So the reference to a final inspection has been deleted. This section is entirely about a matter that is within the town's control, which is our assessment that the right of way has been returned to its pre-construction condition. So we did not reference any county inspection. Instead, the sentence that previously referenced upon final inspection has been changed to say upon completion of the work for which a permit has been issued, the property owner shall be responsible for restoring any disrupted area of the public right of way. Going to page six of attachment two. And there are two references on page six, one in section, subsection B, one in subsection C, both of which referred to on land zone for single-family residential use. As Mayor Keller has reported previously, the technical amendment to state law, which is House Bill one one six seven, is moving well through the legislature. So the reference to land zone for single-family residential use in both the application and interpretation, as well as the setback section, has been deleted because zoning will no longer be pertinent under the House bill. Kind of switching to page seven of attachment two. You all had raised a question. This is section, subsection B, about accessory buildings. You may recall there was previously a reference to setbacks if something was over twenty-eight feet tall. And the question was, can accessory structures really be that tall? In reflecting on that, the town attorney changed the language in subsection B to basically mirror what is the county standard in terms of how setbacks are configured. That same language, by the way, was updated in two point two, minimum rear yard setback subsection B. So both of those are now the county standard. If you look at two point two A, which is main building, twenty-five feet for lots, this has been modified in light of the addition of a depth of lot in section one oh two that we talked about previously. So those are all the changes that have been made since you last discussed this issue on February tenth.
Okay, I have.
Unless somebody has a question for Barbara, I think the next step would be to entertain a motion to introduce.
Motion to introduce.
I'm sorry.
Ordinance number twenty-two-five dash three, building permits.
I'll second.
Yes, introduction, sorry.
Time for discussion?
Yes.
Okay, I have two points. I'd like to recommend under definitions on attachment one, the top of page three. You've added this definition of main building. I'd like to propose that we keep this definition short and simple, and simply have the definition be main building, a building in which the principal dwelling unit or units is located, period, and delete the remainder of the proposed text. I don't, I do not think it is Garrett Park's requirement or prerogative to, at this time, to add that additional language. So that's one point, and we can, you guys can think about that. While I also ask provision number six, so under attachment one, page four, in the middle, number six. I don't remember, I guess this was in there before, so I'm sorry I didn't raise this earlier. It does seem like a performance bond or other surety seems perhaps potentially excessive for some of the smaller activities that a resident might seek a permit for. So for example, if they're just putting in a fence or replacing a fence, or a small shed or something like that. So it just seems like in some cases that that might be excessive. So I wondered if there is the possibility of us making this maybe put in the town may require, and then we could set up some procedure where the town could decide like in what cases and what levels.
Yeah, that would be defined in the resolution. So I would suggest you leave the language as is because your resolution will define both the amount and the type of the type of project that will trigger a performance bond or other surety. I don't think the ordinance is the place to do this. I think it's in the resolution.
I'm sorry, I'm confused as to what you mean by the resolution.
If you read this, it says an application shall be accompanied by a performance bond or other surety and an amount established by resolution of the council to cover the cost of restoration. So that resolution itself would define what the amounts are and what type of permits the surety bond is is required for. This was an issue I specifically talked to the town attorney about.
Okay, so I mean, I think that makes sense, but still, the beginning part of it says, an application shall be accompanied. So that seems to imply that, really make very explicit, that every single application must have a performance bond or other surety. And so I guess I'm questioning that basic premise. So those are my two questions.
It can, there's a number of different ways to satisfy the requirement. Yeah, what I don't know is if this is May. This, this language has been in there since the beginning. Obviously, I don't have the opportunity this evening to talk to the town attorney about whether or not changing shall to May is problematic because our focus has been defining what, what type of activity will require a surety will be addressed in the resolution.
So. Decide that at the time of the resolution.
Yes, that's, that's what I assumed you would do. The other thing, this is this type of, this ordinance is also subject to review by the county council. So out of respect for the county council, if there's issues, I'm not trying to slow it down, but if there's issues that you're uncertain about, I don't want to send this to the county council, then have to go back to the county council. I think that would be disrespectful to them. So if there's issues that you're uncertain about, then I would not, not act on this tonight.
So I guess to address it, we just put, we could, in the resolution, we would put in something that says amount of surety, zero.
Correct, or the resolution would simply say, these are the type of, we would go through the type of projects. These would be, be where the surety is applicable to, or the other way, Phil, is to say it's zero for this. Yes.
Okay.
And that's what my discussion with the town attorney has been.
Given that if we introduce this tonight, it would come up in April for adoption and become effective twenty days later. Is, is the staff comfortable with that timeline in terms of getting a resolution to the, proposed resolution to the council in the same timeline?
Yes, I think so. I mean, I think if you have any guidance, you know, certainly send that. I mean, I did have some discussion, and I'm reviewing other municipal ordinances. You know, obviously, what we're looking at is what are the type of projects that may cause damage to the right of way, and that is the kind of the focus of the resolution. The town attorney has already drafted the base resolution. It's kind of putting in the pieces.
So I just want to make sure that I understand. So this ordinance, if we introduce it tonight, has to go to the county council for review and advice? Like, what are the options or possible actions they might take on it?
They offer comments. It is a requirement under state law that they have the opportunity to review any building regulations.
And I assume we have to, do we have to abide by the comments, or can we choose to ignore?
That I do not have the answer to. Mandatory for all I know. Yeah, I think it's just, I think it's just a review and comment process.
Does the county council have any kind of published procedures, for example, like how, how much time there to be given to comment?
Well, they, they need to be, they need to be provided to the county council at least thirty days. So that is the requirement under the land use article. So that's their window once we send something to them.
And if we were to introduce it tonight, is there, under our own charter and governing rules, a particular period of time that we have to take it up for adoption?
There's a minimum.
There's a minimum.
A maximum period of time, it can be out there in limbo before we can take it up for adoption?
I think an introduced ordinance expires if it isn't acted upon either adoption or amendment within a certain timeframe, but I don't remember the timeframe. I think as a practical matter, these have always been pro forma. As an equally practical matter, if they did comment, we would simply withdraw this and reintroduce it after considering comments.
Okay. I guess I can live with the proposed method of addressing the surety and bond. I do request that my fellow council members consider my proposal for changing the definition of main building.
Yeah, that, that makes good sense because you change it to an inclusive definition rather than a list. The list can exclude items that would be discovered later when the exceptions arrive.
True, and also, right now, it is a list that does not conform with Garrett Park's current land use.
So it says unit or units.
Right, yeah, we both, we've made it more inclusive with those two words. I would end it after the word located, period, and delete the rest at that proposed definition.
That, that makes a lot of sense. There will be plenty of time to address any changes that might be necessary by that sort of AHS-type legislation. I do wonder about the ambiguity between the, the use of the word the principal dwelling unit and then the inclusion of a plural units.
I was going to suggest that we strike units.
Which is, yeah, principal dwelling unit.
Just, just strike everything beyond dwelling unit.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, then it's an incomplete sense.
Is located.
I'm sorry, just or units, you're right. Leave is located.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay. Is there agreement from the mover and seconder that that would be a friendly amendment?
Did we, did we move to introduce this?
Oh, no, we haven't. I'm sorry. You're right.
Yes, yes, you did.
It's a lot of ordinance.
This is the third. This is the third. Yes, okay.
So you need a motion?
It's a friendly amendment, right?
Yes, but we have a motion and second?
Yes.
Sounds like a friendly amendment.
Okay, so we can consider that a friendly amendment. Are there any other discussions, comments?
I guess I have one more question. I believe last month it was clarified for me that the, the corner lots having two front yards and the prohibition against swimming pools in a front yard could be addressed through the variance process. Is that correct?
That is what Mr. Bull recommended, yes.
I thought that was how that was addressed, and I just wanted to double check. Okay.
It's probably a more practical approach than agonizing over language.
That's fair. I just wanted to make sure I hadn't.
Anticipate which is likely, unlikely occurrence.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it was subject to a potential variance if it were to come up.
I have one comment. And one comment that if a council member is like-minded would result in an amendment. Looking at page four of attachment one, number six, based on a concern that was raised, I made a quick call to our attorney. Other surety would involve relatively informal methods such analogous to those that we use for rental of this hall. Namely, you would give a check, which the town would simply hold and not deposit unless there were need to remedy the, the disturbance to the right of way. So that is, depending on how it's administered, does not have to be as onerous a process as it might otherwise. as onerous a a process as it might otherwise appear from some of the language. I do think that the resolution of the council establishing the amounts is going to be relatively complex because it will involve not just the simplicity or complexity of the project, but the kind of materials that would be developed. It may be a small retaining wall that involves the delivery of seven tons of rocks. And also an analysis of the existing state of the right of way. If it's a small immature uh routine tree or if it's an older established mature or uncommon tree. Well, the state of the curb, is it a uh one of our more modern concrete curbs will stand up to delivery trucks going over them easily? Or is it an old asphalt curb that's easily destroyed? In other words, the criteria for the for the uh standards that establish the amount of surety will have to anticipate a range of considerations. And obviously, the details of that can await the presentation of a draft resolution.
Could we just get a copy of the bid to do this restoration work and see what it says? By the owner?
I'm sorry?
Well, so we're saying that the owner has to pay for the cost of restoring the public right of way.
Right, but we have to anticipate in advance how much that might be if the owner balks.
Well, couldn't the owner submit a bid for us to do the work that would outline the cost in the spec of what he's planning to do to restore and then we could accept it or not?
No, it's anticipatory.
Okay.
He may leave the right of way in pristine condition, or he may destroy the curb and knock over a tree.
So it's after he's done the work to restore?
We have to anticipate the maximum damage that could be done to the right of way or some reasonable approximation and ask and ask for a surety in that amount.
Before the restoration work is done?
Before any work, before the before the permit issues.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Okay. Now, my one concern is in the next section, section seven, subsection A. It requires uh compliance with a tree protection plan. I think we should have a little more specificity. There are lots of tree protection plans rattling around. And I would like to see something to the general effect that we're that it should require compliance with the town's specified tree protection plan. If anyone, if anyone shares that concern, um you know, you can you can pull down a pre any old pre tree protection plan.
Do we, do we have a town tree protection plan?
Uh, we would, we would certainly have one.
They're done by the site, by the application.
I thought it was meant to be sites.
It is site specific.
But the ques- but it does raise the question as to whether um the applicant is supposed to propose it and then who would approve it? It is sort of um vague.
Yeah, so the process is that when we get a development application, it is routed to the town's consulting arborist to see if there are any town tree related issues. He will flag whether or not there are issues and what measures he wants, and those become part of the approved building permit letter. Is how it works.
So would a friendly amendment be to say that requiring compliance with the town's tree protection plan, leaving that sort of open and site specific?
Or the approval of the town work of the town arborist?
Well, first of all, let's take this incrementally. Does anyone share the notion that a tree, any tree protection plan is a little open ended?
Agreed, yes.
Then if we want to insert language at this juncture, the question would be what is the language that achieves the the aim? Um, I'll confess, I haven't given that a lot of thought. Uh, substituting this, the town's specified for the word A, for the letter A, um would be one one approach.
Or approved?
Well, what about, what about requiring submission of an approval by the town of a tree protection plan? So another, and and I would not specify the town arborist. I think it should be the town. Obviously, the town manager and town staff would consult with the arborist, but it it should be an administrative act of the town. So I would say requiring the submission of, so the applicant could propose a tree protection plan. It gets negotiated with the town. The town has to approve it.
Yeah, I would agree, but I would refer to like maybe like if if it's not already there, putting in criteria for the tree protection and arboretum plan versus like a plan because it's gonna be, it's gonna change depending on what the tree is.
And I think if we want to do that, we probably need a little bit of time, and we should ask the arboretum committee to perhaps suggest that criteria for us.
Well, that that would be.
They've given that some thought, but I don't think they like articulated.
Elsewhere, I don't think we want to capture that here. And I don't.
Elsewhere where we could capture it, like where we know we would capture that?
I think so.
That would be.
You change the arboretum section to say.
The redraft of the ordinance that I owe the arboretum committee.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, sir.
But I do think it needs to retain this language and not be a part of the application because this language permits the permit to be uh subject to imposed conditions, and those will be ongoing, not just in connection with the application.
It sounds like we'll move, we'll include language to address that thing.
Well, let's.
What language?
We've, we've got the language saying that this can be imposed as a condition. Uh, the town, the the town manager may impose conditions on a permit. And then the various conditions include that are not limited to, and we try to anticipate them.
Right.
This one is a specific one that we try to anticipate as an ongoing condition.
Right. Well, if you look a little further up on page three, it's still attachment one, section B two. It says, an application for a building permit shall be made on a form provided by the council and shall be accompanied by the applicable permit application fee and such plans, drawings, photographs and or and other documents as may be required by the council. So somewhere we have the opportunity to define in our application process um that a tree protection plan should be included and what the criteria would be.
Okay, that's where we require the tree protection plan. Six addresses, I'm sorry, seven addresses the ongoing requirement to comply with it.
Seven A, right.
So do you want to explicitly say that the tree protection plan?
Perhaps I should say with the approved tree protection plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
So requiring compliance with the approved, the town approved tree protection plan.
Okay. So do I have from, do I have from the mover and secondor an agreement for an acceptable
friendly amendment?
Amendment so that A would read seven subsection A would read requiring compliance with the town's approved tree protection.
Yeah, I'm.
My um, my concern with that is it sounds like a generic town tree protection plan, which might be misleading.
A boilerplate.
Because this is meant to be site specific.
Yeah.
With with the tree protection plan approved by the town or something like that. I think we need.
Okay.
Or could you say with the projects?
Yeah, with the projects, tree protection plan. Tree protection plan approved by the.
Tree protection plan approved by the council, right?
No, the town, or the town. Yeah, it doesn't need to come to the council.
Okay. Staff, did you capture that?
Yes.
I did not.
And all of this gets run by our attorney?
Mayor Keller, can we just confirm that I've captured the full and final version of seven A that council would like to see? My language is that section seven A will be amended to read requiring compliance with the project's tree protection plan that was previously approved by the town. Is that full and accurate?
I think you can draw previously, just just to prove.
We'll drop the previously.
Okay.
Agreed.
Yep.
All right. So understanding that we will introduce this this evening, but Ron Bull will look at the changes uh that we are uh have have adopted.
Before it goes to the county council.
Before it goes to the county council.
So um, I'm not sure if I missed something. Were you just making a clarification about number six? Or did you actually propose any changes about the surety?
No, I was just explaining that surety can be a relatively informal.
Small item. Okay, I I wasn't sure if I missed anything there.
No.
Okay.
Not here.
But I was also raising the issue that whatever resolution the this council adopts establishing costs may need to be expressed in terms of criteria rather than dollar amounts. And criteria and ranges. Okay.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And a couple other comments?
Yeah.
Already. Um, on page seven of the second part, under B at the top, near the top, it says accessory building. I think the last time we had that, it was the max height was 28, but it went way down to 15. I think that's too far. I would suggest 20 instead for that. So it's enough to kind of do a garage and a some storage space above. Otherwise, it's like a really short garage.
Okay. You're you're looking on page seven?
Yeah, and then I'm not sure what the number. I guess it's 2.1B.
2.2B.
2.1.
One.
The the up near the top.
2.1 starts at the bottom of page six.
Oh, I'm sorry. There are two paragraphs about accessory buildings.
Oh, yeah, actually, it looks like it's repeated.
It is repeated. Oh, one's for the main building.
For minimum side yard. 2.1 is side yard, 2.2 is rear yard.
Ah, so it's, they're both the same, though. So the change, whatever change we make needs to be made in both places.
Yeah, and I I still, that that's one point is I feel like that might be too harsh to limit it to 15.
You understand it isn't prohibiting heights greater than 15. It's simply establishing a different setback.
Yes, and but then my other question with that is I'm wondering why we need this anyway, because there already is a why we need these stipulations because there already is a um county regulation that we had to follow for five yard or five feet for accessory buildings from the side and the rear. And I also had wondered before, like, if this isn't, is is or is not in conflict with um detached accessory dwelling unit, which has its own setbacks. So on that one, in the gates, like the five feet you would have for a garage on the county, it makes it match the side setback. And then there's a minimum on the rear. I can't remember what it is. It's like 15 or something like that. Um, so you can't do a detached accessory dwelling unit the same as you could a garage, but then or shed. But then this one here says it's, you know, for any accessory structure, which would include. So I wonder if we shouldn't kick it back to both Ron Bolt and to George Martin to ask if, and I I I think 15 is too too restrictive and ask Ron Bolt to clarify if this is not going to be in conflict with other things.
Yeah, I did send a copy of the updated version of the ordinance to George Martin last week, because as I mentioned earlier, he was helping um with some of the language changes that were proposed at the last meeting. I mean, I think where this the trajectory of tonight's discussion is is this ordinance should not be introduced tonight. I think there's just too many issues that you all are raising that I think need to be reviewed. So my recommendation is you get them all on the table. I take them back to George Martin and the ordinance not be introduced tonight. Because I'm I'm concerned about trying to make changes on the fly and sending something to the county council and then having to repeat this again.
Make it in April slash May.
Yeah, so um.
Okay, but so ultimately, we will uh withdraw the motion to introduce and substitute a motion to send it to our council for discussion of the issues we identified, that this some of the specific language we identified identified and the issue. I and I am still unclear on um 2.1 and 2.2B, what the concern is because it does not limit the height.
No, but it adds more setback. Um, my concern would be like um most lots in town, it's kind of narrow. So like my lot is 50 feet. So that would really, if I ever wanted to do a garage there, just an example of myself, you know, it'd make it where really all you could do is one story. You can't do one story plus like a storage loft or anything else like that.
You could do it. It would be in the middle of your yard.
Yeah, that's it. It's really restrictive to do it that way. So that's why I kind of, I feel like it's over worried to about tall, kind of tall accessory buildings that aren't. And I feel like a lot of that's already covered by the county.
But if you increase the height, that also increases the setback ratio. In other words, it seems more restrictive. Right? Increase the height.
Yeah, if you if you make it the taller, you know, Chris's point, the taller, you you make it taller, but you can, you have to start moving it to the center of the building. So that means if you have a narrow lot or narrowish lot or triangular lot, you you have a lot less moving room. And I would, I would point out to the concern of having such buildings be one and a half or two stories tall, that a lot of boulder houses in this town have carriage houses that are seen as some of the um more charming ones in town. I I don't think I've heard of many of them really being a problem. I feel like this is a little bit over imagined as a problem, and I I know one of the ones that people would say is like one of the most charming is actually not even on their property. It like goes off the property, let alone being within five feet of it. So um, and there's been a bunch of garages in the past that have been like that too. So I I just wonder if that's not something we need to be a little bit more open to.
I would agree with you. I mean, I think that 20 feet would be better. I mean, at this point, just to get the extra five feet, that means you got to move 10 feet away from additional feet away. And I don't know if it's going to buy the town anything. It may actually make things worse.
I feel like 20 is a decent ratio compared to like a, the main building can be 35. So like the house next door is probably 35 or close to it. Actually, no, it was surprisingly less than 35. I remember when we reviewed that, but um yeah, but it was just, I think it'd just be a little bit more fair in ratio to do that.
So Stephen, in both places, you're suggesting that 15 feet be changed to 20?
Yeah.
Um. In both of those, right?
Both sections. Yes, that's what I'm asking.
I wonder why, why you can't like combine side and rear setbacks to be one, talk to together instead of having to do it like where it is kind of repeated for side and rear.
Yeah.
Because they're the same numbers.
I think it's because the the code, as the mayor indicated, has a minimum side yard setback and a minimum rear yard setback. So I think it was to try to keep the the essential structure of the code the same.
Yeah, could I ask a question, Stephen? I think this would be a rare situation, but could you end up with a situation? I I'm not great with visualizing 20 feet versus 15. I'm going to be upfront about that, but could you have a situation where you have a relatively small main building? And the proposal is for the accessory dwelling to be out of scale to the main building and do our, does our ordinance um give us some flexibility to address that potential out of scaleness that may not be desirable?
I think for um, I don't know if there is a limit on the garage. Well, there is up to your max lot coverage, but you could, I guess conceivably have like a very large garage with a very small house and still fall within a 20, 20% total. And a big lot, it could be bigger garage, but accessory dwelling units, like if it was done as a dwelling, it has its own setbacks and everything else by the the county anyway, and it has its own height limit. I can't remember what it is.
Yeah, I guess I'm envisioning the situation that I'm envisioning might be like a Chevy house that gets sort of overshadowed by its own accessory dwelling. Maybe that's a rare situation that we shouldn't worry too much about, but 20 feet, like, um, what's the ceiling height in here?
This is probably 12.
Okay.
Yeah.
So twenty feet is two stories. So fifteen, fifteen would be higher than the ceiling here.
Well, I guess most of your Chevy houses around town, the way the county would define the roof, kind of calculating in my head, it's probably nine plus four, five, so nine plus five, plus six. That's nine plus, nine plus five plus six is twenty.
Twenty, twenty.
Yeah. So that would be kind of like a Chevy house. Like it's, the way they would calculate it is if it has pitch roof, it's from the bottom to the top. It's like the average height of that. So that would be like, say, guessing that's like six. And if the first floor is sitting up five feet and there's like another nine feet to where the roof starts, that's kind of what I'm figuring. So
Okay.
It's, it's probably in that range of a Chevy house, maybe a little bit taller than that.
Okay. So what you're suggesting is it would be fairly rare for twenty feet to be taller than the main building?
Pretty rare, yeah. And if it's like a sixties ranch, it might be.
Okay.
But even if it did it, it would be behind the house. So it would be from your perspective from the street, you wouldn't see it as much. I mean, it's, it's nothing to keep it from somebody building something like that purposely behind your house. I mean, there were comments that came out about somebody built a, like accessory building behind the house. It was up the hill. It looks bigger than it really is, but it was still in compliance. I don't think that one's even twenty. I think that one's probably fourteen, fifteen, something.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
What, the question is, do we want to?
How would we resolve this?
Attempt, attempts of language to send to our attorney for vetting? Or do we want more input from someone like George Martin or the Land Use Committee on what's, what's, what the issues really are? In terms of overshadowing neighbors or what have you.
That's usually what has been his concern. At least he's told me. I think you too. There was this kind of concern that somebody would build something tall in the corner of their lot. It would feel like it's almost looking over other properties like a watchtower and that not really just about the windows and the height, but more like the lighting, kind of in the backyard where it might be darker. Yeah. It might be like an area that's normally dark would all of a sudden be lit up with like the porch light and, you know, other things. I mean, you get that with, a little bit with garages, but so I kind of agree with the point, but I just worry that, you know, fifteen may be too harsh.
So what's the upshot? We want to reserve judgment on this and get more information on which to fashion a standard or suggest a standard here and now?
I have another question about ten, ten, section one. The last sentence, a house situated on more than one lot may only be demolished or razed only if the site is replatted to a single lot. So like on my property, there was a house on three buildable, three lots. And the builder knocked it down and made a twenty thousand square foot lot and then a ten thousand square foot lot. So does this language say that wouldn't be possible? I'm just wondering if there's a buildable lot that we're taking away with this language, like Chow's house.
I think that, that language has been existing for some time. Isn't that existing language?
It's existing language. It's just carrying over.
Yeah, it's an exist, yeah. So this is only for, so this isn't an, an existing house?
That language is in our existing ordinance. It's not new.
Okay.
Is the point I'm making.
Oh, this is existing word.
Yeah, this is existing language. It's not new.
That's what we've been doing all along? Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
But on the accessory building, it might just not hurt to ask like what the point is of strengthening our language in there. Because traditionally we relied on the county language for accessory buildings, so.
I think this issue came up because as I was working on this with the town attorney, he noticed that there were no town building standards. And I think the question was, does the town want to have its own building regulations for accessory buildings? Because right now there's nothing in, in the code that addresses accessory building and setbacks.
But even if we don't have it, we're still, um,
You, you can.
We still have to follow the county, which is what has been done. And it's the same for an accessory dwelling unit too.
Is, what am I doing? Am I taking this out altogether? Is that where we're, we're ending?
Maybe put the question back to, to land use and Ron.
Yeah.
If, if it's not overkill to have this. I don't know if, like, it may be something where Ron is concerned that other commit, or other towns are having owners that are surprised by the counting of regulation. But it's a pretty normal five foot setback though.
So right now, if, if, in the, with, under the county regulation, the accessory building can be five feet from the lot line. And how tall without any?
I don't remember.
Because I mean, it could be concerning that a twenty foot structure suddenly appears five feet from your lot line. So.
Is the lot coverage still the same? The open space?
Yeah, that hasn't changed.
That's the same.
Right. But I guess my point is that this proposal says that if it's over fifteen feet tall, the accessory building, it has to come in from the lot line a commensurate.
Proportional.
Proportional amount. And I have to say, as I think about this a little bit, if my neighbor suddenly put a big shed that's twenty feet tall and twenty-four feet wide, as this allows, right up against five feet from my lot line, I would be a little concerned as a neighbor. So I would appreciate that extra. It has to go a little bit more onto their property and not as close to mine if it's over fifteen feet.
Yeah. That's just tricky because it, it does make it really hard on a lot of lots. It makes it where you really, you don't have much option.
That's the variance process, right? They could, they could ask for a variance because they have an unusual lot.
Is, is it the sense of the council that we want?
More time to think about this.
Just a redraft or a narrative explanation of the pros and cons of various approaches?
Probably wouldn't hurt to have the pros and cons because we're having to debate about fifteen versus twenty.
Yeah.
Right.
You know?
That would be good.
We're also assuming that our committee, volunteer committee members, you know, will be willing to provide their advice.
I'm not sure if the whole committee's even.
No, no, but George.
So are we retracting that introduction then?
It seems like a good idea. We've, we've raised enough issues.
Okay.
We'll be forwarding to the attorney on the issues we've identified, including some of the specific language.
I do want to say though, Barb and Kayla, I know you guys have put a lot of work into this and, and it's showing fruit. It's, this is a very complex issue. And so I just want to express my appreciation for all of the work that's gone, gone so far. And we are getting closer to completing this effort. So thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash four, adopting a new chapter thirteen code concerning provision, uh, procurement and disposition. Kayla, would you like to begin by summarizing that?
So this is your final ordinance to consider for the night. So I'm sure you're all very excited.
What's the number of it?
Twenty twenty-five dash four.
Okay.
Um, actually, town manager Matthews just reminded me with the retraction of the introduction of the building permit ordinance. This will now become number twenty twenty-five dash three. So we're moving up in the world. The members of council and the mayor may recall that we have had several discussions about various potential drafts for an actual codified procurement and disposition position for the town. The current uncodified version is the front and back of an eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper that does not address numerous situations that the town has found itself in, whether that be about thresholds for signing authority, whether that be about emergency procurement. It does not address certain things like disbaring a contractor who has performed poor work or has otherwise violated the town's standards. So throughout these discussions that we've had, both in calendar year twenty twenty-four and earlier this year in January, the mayor and town council have provided numerous pieces of feedback. We have gone through several drafts of this. I do appreciate all of your patience as we try and find something that meets Garrett Park's needs for a fair and consistent playing field about how we use municipal funds, as well as respecting our need to function with our smaller staff and our smaller needs. At the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five town council meeting, the final direction that staff received was to incorporate language that would allow via resolution, the town council to periodically adjust the threshold at which the mayor and or the town manager slash clerk treasurer could execute a contract. They had also requested that the town attorney go through a final review of the draft ordinance at that time. Mr. Bolt, our town attorney, has been heavily involved in the previous drafts of this project. I believe the final review was his third or fourth time reading through the language. After that review and after I incorporated some language to try and capture the town council's direction on January twenty-third, we had a further conversation with Mr. Bolt. And as such, there is now some modified language in article one, section thirteen oh two administration, which includes the following. It establishes that the town will be compliant with the competitive bidding threshold established by the state. To be clear, there is a state law about certain procurements that must be acknowledged via public notification that the town is seeking. The threshold for that is established by state law. The town does not have the authority to change that notification dollar figure.
How much is it?
Currently for categories two and three, which are the majority of the town's procurements, it's anything over fifteen thousand dollars must have public notification via the state procurement website, which is the Maryland Marketplace Advantage website, often referred to as Emma. It's where our most recent RFP for the tree services contracts was posted. It had been town practice to post to Emma. It helps get a good number of responses. But this is just formally codifying that we will be compliant with state law about advertising it. The other language that was added to article one, section thirteen oh two administration was a revised version of the clarification of what town council wanted to have, which was the ability to, via resolution, adjust to keep up with inflation times or other concerns, the ability to grant authority to the mayor and or the town manager slash clerk treasurer to independently approve and execute contracts without having to necessarily come before council. Currently in this version, based on previous conversations, that authority would be raised to fifteen thousand dollars. You have all seen this draft before. I am hopeful that what you have before you is something that you are comfortable introducing, so that we can hopefully get our chapter thirteen and move forward into a much more clear and consistent procurement position.
I have question, half comment here. Would it be better to have a table of the variables, you know, like the fifteen thousand dollars? There's a five thousand dollars, it's a five percent buried in here versus having them hard written into each portion? Because I would assume that if we make a change via resolution, then somebody's going to have to go through and make a, a whole bunch of changes versus referring to some table somewhere.
So that might be something I could discuss with the, um, town attorney. What I will say is that fifteen thousand is pegged to a very, very specific threshold, which is the level of authority that you grant the mayor and or the town manager slash clerk treasurer to execute a contract. As I am leafing back through this draft, I see other dollar figures that are not fifteen thousand, like the disposal of goods or anything over five thousand
Right.
is meant to be put out.
But.
I.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
No, my apologies. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Um, but see, what I was thinking is if we're going to have the ability to periodically adjust some numbers here, if the numbers are already hardcoded into this thing or already written in there, I'm just wondering if it'd be easier to put it in the table or to refer to a particular ordinance if that's the case. You know, um.
You're suggesting like refer to like a table of thresholds or something like?
Exactly. And then that way you're not having to change the ordinance, because right now the way it is, if we want to change fifteen thousand because of, say, uh, inflation, now we gotta make a whole bunch of changes versus just making a change to a table.
That was not something that concerned the town attorney and I when we went through our most recent review of the draft. I can bring it up about him. Bring it up to him, my apologies. The way it's currently phrased in thirteen oh two subsection D is that the contents may it might just be a formatting thing, but I don't want to commit to that without talking to the attorney.
Right. But I mean, so for instance, if we look at contract approval B, you know, you'll see in here where it says all contracts involving fifteen thousand dollars or more. And then we see another one for fifteen thousand. There's another fifteen thousand. There's fifteen thousand written all over the joint. And all's I'm saying is to make it, I'm, well, actually partly a question because if fifteen thousand is written in here and we decided later on to change that number due to inflation or something, or even lower, not that we would, but if we did, wouldn't you have to go through and update everywhere it said fifteen thousand and make it the new number, whatever said number is?
Or could it be reworded? So the fifteen thousand only has to be said once?
Well, that was kind of where it was coming from. I mean, whatever form or fashion one wants to do that, be it a table or a definition, it's just to make it easier, I would think, for those maintaining this to be able to just make one change.
I I think at this point in time, if town council wants a table, I can talk with Ron Bolt. But from a records maintenance, what would be more important to my mind is keeping track of the resolutions that town council may authorize in subsection D.
Right.
I'm was that the only thing that was?
Other thing that I had, which, well, two things I had. One is, um, thirteen oh five, avoidable contract. I don't know how some of the contracts work. Some of the contracts that I've been involved with have cancellation clauses, meaning that that if, uh, the town were to cancel something for whatever reason, that's not followed by the contractor, that the contractor may get reimbursed for cancellation clause, which would be not necessarily goods or services provided, because maybe they never provided goods or services. They started working the project or whatever.
And they turned down other work.
Right.
So as town manager Matthews and I were acknowledging to each other, the contracts that we actually do have a vendor execute do include language meant to protect the town if we must cancel. And I don't believe we have encountered a situation where we have had to pay out work for a canceled contract.
Okay, fair enough. The last one I have is the override bid requirements. Any requirement for competitive building imposed by this ordinance may, may be overridden for good cause by a majority vote. One thing I think is you'll probably have to put, and this is on the top of page eight, by the way. Right about part three examples. I would think that the very least that should be modified to say in compliance with state laws somehow that would be fit in there. And the second thing is I, I question if it's good or if we can even do this, because basically what it's saying is that by power of a resolution, you can override some portion of this thing. Yet we have to introduce this as a resolution. So I'm just bringing it up because I'm kind of scratching my head saying I could overwrite what, I could overwrite any of these portions with just a simple, um, you know, resolution. Whereas normally we do an ordinance, like for the budget, for example, you do another ordinance to modify the budget. So.
So looking at section thirteen eleven, which is the override of bid requirements, where the language spills onto the top of page eight, that was a section, Councilor Schult, that you had previously flagged concerns about, that I had gone back to town attorney Ron Bolt to discuss about. He has stood by this language that the majority vote of the town council would be sufficient. I can go back to him again and ask him to reaffirm that that language is sufficient and to modify it to include. sufficient and to modify it to include the in compliance with state law phrasing that you have recommended that you want to do. I do want to clarify that section thirteen eleven does not require a resolution. The resolution is referenced in thirteen oh two as the mechanism by which the council may periodically adjust the signing authority. Thirteen eleven, the override of bid requirements requires a majority vote of town council. Just so we're all clear.
If we say something like in extenuating circumstances, any requirements for competitive bidding, blah, 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 how would that be?
Well, then I think we have to define extenuating circumstances.
Yeah, you're right. Let's forget that, sorry.
Well, it's the same with good cause.
I like the simplicity of the way it's written now.
Okay, well, I just wanted to bring it up, just.
We appreciate that, and I'm deeply grateful for both your careful reading of the document and for town attorney Ron Bolt's careful and thoughtful answers to the questions that have come up as we've developed through the process.
Okay.
May I introduce this ordinance?
Okay, we'll take a motion to introduce ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash four, updating the town's procurement processes.
Like to move to introduce.
I'll second.
All right. Is there any further discussion? I would doubt that it needs a
My apologies, Councilmember Paskowski, did you say ordinance number twenty-five dash four or dash three?
Twenty twenty.
I was trying to save it.
The newly number, twenty twenty-five dash three. I just want to make sure we're introducing the appropriate ordinance.
Twenty-five dash not four, dash three.
Any further discussion?
I'd also like to thank the town staff for putting this together, so.
Yeah.
Having had to surfer over that topic before.
Required a lot of effort. But it's a good update, yeah.
And it's long and complicated, and I, recognizing that, there's, there's one misspelling and some typos, so maybe a thorough review. The misspelling won't be caught with a spell checker because it's Latin.
Thank goodness.
Page six, section thirteen oh five. The reference is to quantum meruit, M E R U I T. And then there are stray periods throughout, so just a good proofreading.
Straight periods always come from like a black line, seems like, whenever you do a
Anything further on introduction of twenty twenty-five dash four, adopting a new chapter thirteen?
We've renumbered it.
Oh, we renumbered?
Yes.
Of course, of course, of course. My apologies. Okay. All in favor?
This is policy of the year.
Stephen, do you want to address closure of Beach Drive on Fridays?
Yeah, so I ended up receiving kind of an email that went around the horn from community groups and it came from advocates from, was it Parkwood? I think it's Parkwood or Parkside, whatever, Parkwood, that's on the other side of Beach Drive, kind of south of Knowles. And I think it was also related to some other communities or upstream on Beach Drive. And their, their issue is, if you all recall, when COVID struck, the Beach Drive was closed off between Knowles and I guess it's down to Cedar. It was kind of used for recreational path. After the COVID time kind of lifted, it was rolled back to stay on the weekend, which is kind of like what DC does, or the DC line, it gets cut off, but then they also put in Friday. The folks over in Parkwood are concerned because a lot of the southbound traffic that comes down Beach Drive, it hits that gate and they either have to go left or right. Very many, a lot of people, they turn left and then they weave their way through Parkwood to get their way over to wherever they're going versus going all the way out to Connecticut. They were curious if our community had a similar concern for people to go right and go through Garrett Park.
They would come and
That's the question. Well, it would just come up.
Knowles.
Come up Knowles and come up Strathmore, but it's a little different because our town, there's nowhere you can, you can go off the side, but there's nowhere to go, so. So people generally have to go all the way through until they get to Flanders. But this, they're asking if, if our town has any concerns about it. I tried looking since I'm on Strathmore, just to see, like the traffic's pretty notable almost every day, so I didn't really notice a big difference between Thursday and Friday, but Saturday is really, really heavy.
Ways takes you down into Parkwood, and those guys are a half block from Beach, whereas we're, you know, five or six blocks up the hill. I think that's the difference. I mean,
Yeah, but it's just, it's more like if you're, but if you're going down Beach Drive from like where the railroad is, if you, if you keep on going down, you kind of go around towards wrapping back around towards Cedar, and it's just, if you're going in that direction, you're gonna keep on going. I guess you could still go down. You could argue you go down, you would normally be down Beach to get to three fifty-five by the metro. But I just don't know if our community has a concern. Basically, what they're wondering is if, if AR community has a concern about it and if we would like to join them. They wanted to push again, push back against this with the county park planner that is advocating for opening all these roads and parkways and on Fridays, so.
Well, this, this is the schedule is they're gonna open it just to pedestrians and cyclists.
I assume that's a euphemism for closing it.
Yeah, that's basically what it is, yeah.
Right, yeah. I mean, personally, I'm in favor of this, and I wouldn't dream of pushing back on this proposal.
Agreed. I'm not sure we get enough traffic through, because there's nowhere to go. It's not like people can really cut through our town.
Yeah, they've done this at least periodically for some time now, and I haven't seen any
It's been continuous since twenty twenty.
I use it a lot for walking and walking when it's closed. It's really nice.
So we can just tell them, sounds like no, no real concern. They're on their own, so.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a, a new business plan? A question, a question under new business?
Oh, sure.
I, I just wanted to ask the council if there is any interest in undertaking an effort to consider whether we want to opt in to the county's noise control ordinance changes that have changed the allowable uses of gas-powered
leaf blowers.
leaf blowers and lawn equipment. At least one, maybe several residents have raised it to me as to whether the town is going to opt in. It fully takes effect in July of twenty twenty-five. So if we don't opt in, we'll sort of be a little island where suddenly gas-powered, we're the only ones allowing gas-powered leaf blowers. And I'm not sure exactly, I was trying to look it up here, whether it's just the leaf blower or whether it's other equipment, but anyway, I just, there's a process involved there, and so I wondered if we wanted to begin that rolling or not.
Leaf blowers.
Okay.
Yeah.
And
The noise, they will be banned?
It's part, yes, in the county.
So they can use electric ones that don't pollute and are quieter.
Right, right.
I think if my, my just anecdotal observation is over forty-five years that a vast majority of our residents now use commercial landscape maintenance firms. I don't think they're gonna keep two kinds of equipment on their trailers and suddenly start using the gas ones in Garrett Park. But I could be wrong.
Well, I would opt in myself.
I think we have some individual homeowners who still do their own landscape maintenance, who may not want to dispose of their gas-powered mower. And
Leaf blower.
I'm sorry, leaf blower, sorry. Yeah, the mowers are not yet under that, under that restriction. And for some of them, it is a not just a landscape maintenance issue, it is a free exercise of their God-given constitutional rights. And one of them ran out and bought some extra internal combustion leaf blower so that they could uphold that final tradition. So, I'm sorry, I'm, I don't mean to make light of it. However, the reason the town did not opt into the noise ordinance decades ago is that we consider ourselves a friendly neighborhood community. And if your neighbor is making noise, you just go over and quietly ask him to stop.
Not your neighbor, it's the, it's the contractor.
And if they comply with the law, they're not gonna have a problem. The problem is going to be individuals, unless I'm wrong about the fact that the the commercial outfits will also keep gas blowers on their tractor trailers and suddenly haul them out the minute they cross the line into Garrett Park. I doubt that's gonna happen.
I would agree with that one. That being said, I did
The question is, if one of our fellow residents hauls out a leaf blower and we have opted in to the county ordinance, who is going to seek enforcement? The county enforces it only if an inspector witnesses the infraction. It's just like speeding. And they are on duty, I think, nine to five weekdays.
So we'd have to get an inspector to come.
More about that in view of concerns at the pool, but the point, I'm sorry, the point is opting into the county noise ordinance comes with certain pragmatic limitations in terms of the county's enforcement and certain lowercase p political considerations in terms of our own residents, both pro and con.
Right.
So, some residents may feel that it is a symbolic gesture to opt into it, even though the county doesn't enforce it. And vice versa.
And to be fair, constituent raised this to me, and so I feel obligated to bring it to the council as to whether we want to explore this consideration. I have been under the assumption, but I have not really had time to research it myself, that opting into the noise ordinance just for this single purpose would still bring along with it the rest of the noise ordinance you know, elements, which we may or may not, as a, as a town, desire.
What are they?
I'm not sure. That's the thing. I haven't had time to do the research myself. Yeah, so my question tonight was simply to let you know that at least one resident has sent me emails about this, and I was wondering if there was any interest in the council to begin any exploration or not.
It is a
Okay, so we have one interest.
It is a slippery slope. I have looked at that with regard to the pool over the years. We've had to take noise readings because the pool has a weird carve-out here. Because they have a special exception to use residential property to operate a swimming pool, that means that they have to follow any rules given by the special exception, the zoning folks who did that, one of them is noise. And so when my wife was president, we went through and looked at all the stuff we had to come up with, noise readings, we had to take noise readings on a regular basis at the edge of the pool. People had the, or I'm sorry, the edge of the pool fence. And it was literally so quiet that it was, you couldn't hold a slightly loud conversation without having exceeding the noise ordinance. And it became very subjective. So, we did take readings, but somebody'd have to run around and take a reading, and there you gotta get somebody you know, somebody to enforce it. I mean, for sure, there are some people who flaunt it, because I know there's some people on one of the streets around here, I can hear them play with their garage band going on some Friday or Saturday nights. No, it's actually, I think it's over here off Waymouth, but at least it feels, it felt that way. Nevertheless, to actually even with the pool is very difficult to meet the requirements.
The county.
Yeah.
County. So, another option might be for us to consider simply an educational campaign to encourage residents to follow the county guidelines, even though we aren't explicitly opting in as a town. I don't want to take up too much time tonight. It's already after ten PM. I just wanted to get this out there as something to, for you to think about, whether we want to explore any measures in this regard, since it is fully taking effect beginning in July, and we are coming upon, upon the, you know, the spring and summer.
Well, might I suggest, might I suggest that we propose an ordinance just to ban gas leaf blowers? Because that's really what you're talking about here, right? I mean,
That's an interesting option as well.
I mean, it's something to think about, because if, if the thing is to get rid of the gas leaf blowers, then maybe we just do an ordinance, and then that way we have control over it. That way, we're not stuck with a noise ordinance and so forth, but just a thought with
Yeah, that's an interesting consideration as well, because I don't think the county's sole aim was noise here. They use the noise ordinance, but their, their goal also was to get rid of the gas tower.
Exactly.
They don't want the two-cycle engine, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, that's all. I just wanted to kind of get that out there for folks to think about, whether we want to act on it at some later point.
Just a side comment, though, I'm much more concerned by noise from other things than leaf blowers. I feel like they're not terribly bad, but like I've had, I've measured eighty-five decibels in my, staining my back door before, and it wasn't from a leaf blower, so. Really not good, and also concerned, I'm not sure what we can do about it. What we can do about it. I think the, the state is considering doing what Virginia and I think some other states have done to start cracking down on the the performance mufflers of cars going by. It's ridiculous. I hear them all the way down from Beach Drive.
I, I think that's something that's definitely outside of our ability to
Yeah, we'd only be able to handle it on the side streets, but.
Thank you for the extra moment.
It's been moved and seconded.